I'd like to call the Jackson County Board of Commissioners, Board Meeting for October 23rd, 2012, to order at 7:00 PM. This is our annual meeting. Please all rise and assume a reverent position. Commissioner David Elwell.
Please bow your heads. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight in your presence. We ask that you watch over our military, serving both overseas and abroad, protecting our freedoms and our country. We also ask that you keep your guiding hand on our law enforcement personnel and firefighters, as they also serve and protect their communities in this great nation. As we conduct the business of Jackson County tonight, we pray for your guidance in making wise choices that are in the best interest of our constituents and county. Lastly, and importantly, we pray that you give us your guidance and wisdom as we prepare for elections of those that will represent us in our local communities, as well as lead this great nation. Of this we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
At this time, I would ask the Grass Lake Junior Girl Scouts, Troop 60097, Dana and Kylie, to please step forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Try it again. Nope. There we go. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hurl?
Here.
Commissioner Leczka?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Present.
Commissioner Alexander?
Present.
Commissioner Vidito?
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney? Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Price?
Present.
Commissioner Way?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Shotwell?
Present.
Eleven present.
At this time, I'd entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion and support. Any items to be removed or corrected? Seeing none, all in favor of the agenda, say aye, please. Aye. Those opposed? Duly carried. We have no awards and recognition to come before the Board of Commissioners. Is there any communications or petitions to come from the public? Seeing none, we've now arrived at the public hearing for the CDBG grants. You have a letter in your packet and communication. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Any public comment? Any Commissioner comments to be entered in the record? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll be voting later on a resolution. We're at the first opportunity for public comment. If you'd like to address the board, please step forward and identify yourself with your Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we have no special meetings this evening of the Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for the minutes of the 9/1812 regular meeting of the Board of Jackson County Commissioners.
Move to approve the minutes?
Support.
Any corrections or deletions, or items to be added? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? At this time, we're at item 12. We've arrived at the consent agenda. Have a motion for the consent agenda, please. We have a motion from Commissioner Vidito, supported by Commissioner Way. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, let's use our electronic to vote, please. The consent agenda has passed 11 to nothing. At this time, we've arrived at standing committees. First committee to report, county policy, chaired by Commissioner David Elwell. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On our agenda is the board organization discussion, and instead of making the motion right out of the box to bring motion forth that came from the Policy Committee, I discussed with you just before the board meeting started that there may be in wisdom in having open discussion amongst the commission first, and then handling the voting on this procedure much the same as we do appointments when we have multiple candidates, which would be the clerk would call each commissioner after the discussion for support of which proposal they want, whichever one gets the most votes is the one that wins for next time. That's versus, I think, just giving an up-down vote on the one that we sent out. I'll also say that I strongly support the one that we recommended. Policy Committee recommended three-committee structure with a study session and a committee of the whole meeting. I support that most because it most closely represents what we have now, and I think it would serve us the best. But there may be other commissioners with strong feelings on the other two potential options. So again, instead of making a motion that we approve that one, I would throw out the suggestion to the chair that, to allow discussion by the commissioners, and when discussion is concluded, that each commissioner simply vote for which one they want. Thank you.
We'll open the floor for discussion.
Must not be as hot a topic as I thought.
Commissioner Duckham?
I fully support the three-committee structure with the study session, very similar to what we're doing now. However, I don't know if it's been changed here or not. I like the Friday study session, the Monday standing committee session. It was mentioned in policy to have a week in between, and I didn't care for that. I think it's just you're dragging the business on, get it going while it's fresh on your mind after the study session. So that would be my recommendation, is a three-committee structure with Friday study session, Monday meetings. Thank you.
I definitely, and you've heard me before, don't like the committee of the whole meetings. They just go on and everybody sleeps through the last half of the meeting. Nothing gets done. And I guess, so I would suggest that we do the three-committee structure, just like Commissioner Duckham supported, except that sometimes at a study session, we need some more information, or ask for some additional information before we have the committee meetings, and that would give, if we didn't have them the following Monday, we waited a week, that would give the administration a week to get us information that we might need to make a decision at the committee meeting before we pass it on to the board. So I guess I would suggest that there be a week between the study session and the committee meetings.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Elwell?
Mr. Chair, we did discuss that in policy a little bit about the wisdom, and really first settling on which structure we wanted, and then talking at some other time, you know, maybe next month or whatever, about what the day layout should be. I kind of like it the way it is now, and I think there's a benefit in not stretching meetings out throughout the whole month. I kind of pride myself on not missing meetings. I haven't missed a commissioner meeting since I've been here, regular board meeting. And when you stretch it out, it makes it difficult to get away without missing a meeting. But my personal preference would be to decide on which structure first tonight, and then we can make another recommendation, maybe next month, on what it should be, and that would come after consultation with the administrator and deputy administrator on when it should fall. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, it seems that we have a motion for three-committee structure. Commissioner Elwell, would you be willing to make that motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and support. So we'll be following the recommendation that came out of policy. All in favor? Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
Nothing else to report, Mr. Chair.
County Affairs and Agency, chaired by Commissioner Dave Leczka. Commissioner Leczka?
Thank you, Chairman. Tonight, we have land bank appointments. The first one is one county commission member. The committee moved that both Julie Alexander and Gail Mahoney's name be brought to the board for consideration. Given that, at this point, I'd nominate Julie Alexander.
Any other nominations from the floor? Commissioner Duckham?
I'd like to nominate Gail Mahoney.
Okay. Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hurl?
Alexander.
Commissioner Leczka? Commissioner Rice?
Commissioner Alexander.
Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Alexander? Mr. Vidito?
Alexander.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Price?
Alexander.
Commissioner Way? Mr. Elwell?
Alexander.
Chairman Shotwell?
Congratulations, Julie. Commissioner Leczka?
The, we have an appointment for one city representative, but the city has not forwarded a name, so I guess we'll ask him for another name. And we have one public member with construction experience. We have one candidate, Kevin Cunningham.
Any nominations from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Leczka?
That takes care of our committee business tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Human Services, chaired by Commissioner John Williams. Commissioner Williams?
Mr. Chairman, we have one item come before the board this evening. You note in your packet that the NSP3 pub, from the public comment phase, there were two letters that came from the townships indicating an interest in changing the designation of dollars. One was to utilize the full 10% that's available as initially set forth by the NSP3 grant, and the other was to try to seek a waiver to use the whole amount for demolition purposes. At this time, I would move that we support the board administrators, the administration's position to increase that full 10% to, for demolition, as requested by Bleak Blackman Township. That is a form of motion.
I have a motion and support. Any comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Elwell?
Just two, it was requested by Blackman Township and Summit, as I recall, both townships. And to be clear, I think there was 100 in 16,000 in total. 60,000 has been allocated already, which would mean this bump to a max of 10% would allocate another 56,000, if my math is right.
Commissioner Way?
I just want to say that I think this has been going on for a year and a half, maybe two years. I think it's been a poor way of bringing it to us. There's been hiccups along the way. I don't know if that's from Community Action Agency, or if it's from HUD. I'm not sure, but the whole thing has been screwy. I didn't like it when it first started. I reluctantly voted on it when they said we can only have one township, and now they said we can have three townships. So I'm, just based on that, I'm not going to support it. I'll be voting no, just because I think it was a terrible process. And the other thing is, we did not ask for this money. We did not apply for this money. And quite frankly, I believe the federal government doesn't have 1.3 million dollars to give out to people that don't ask for it. So I will be voting no on this.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Rice?
I'd just like to speak to a couple of concerns I have in regards to this. I have had conversations with the county treasurer, and also Toby Berry from the Community Action Agency here recently. And the concerns I have got from them, and other Commissioners here who are on the land bank, understand that at this point, there is no, there's no county housing available in either Leoni, Summit, or Blackman Township to be demolished. Again, we have no properties whatsoever in those three townships. So we're talking about, we're talking about three townships, and I have talked to Supervisor Britton as well. We're talking about three townships and their officials wanting, wanting this increase to 10% because they want this money spent in their communities. The problem, though, is, if you talk to our treasurer, and you talk to Toby Berry, it doesn't look like there's going to be any county-owned tax for closed, uh, tax for closed properties. There's none there. So my question is, where are they going to spend the money in the township? If they don't spend it there, we all know it's going to go back into the city. The second thing is, I do understand that they can buy property in the census tract, they can buy a home and then demolish it, but if they do that, my conversation with Toby Berry is that, if they do that, then a house has to be put on that property. We, as Commissioners, have already brought, brought it to the Community Agency's attention, A.C.'s attention, that we don't want new houses built. So again, if you can't buy a house, tear it down, put down a new house, and there's no houses to be demolished, where is this money going to go? That's a big question. And another point of emphasis is, the language in here underneath analysis on number three, it talks about, it talks about where, that any houses that are torn down in the county, the houses have to be put back on that land. I think the language in this needs to be tweaked a little bit, because that's not true. If it's, if it's a tax for closed county property, you do not have to put a house back on there. And that's not really clear in this language, and I think that, that should, I think that should be tweaked. So if we're going to make, my motion would be that we tweak this to say that tax for closed county properties that are demolished do not have to have housing put on them. And that's not clear in this, in this particular recommendation. Thank you.
Commissioner Elwell?
Just a couple of comments. I echo the same comments as Commissioner Way. I voted no for this, I think, year ago, or two years ago, when it first came up, because we did not include all three census tracts. But I accept that it went through. I think it's a backwards process when we have to approve the project and then open a 15-day public comment period. That's stupid government, and that's a HUD rule. I'm not blaming CAA for that, or us for that, because I've talked with Toby about it, and it's just the requirement of the way it works. It's absolutely stupid to have a public comment period after you've approved a plan. But I had requested that Toby come out to Blackman Township Board Meeting when I was there. She knows, obviously, much more about this than I do, and answered all the questions. And I recall specifically talking about what could or must happen with a property after it's demolished. My recollection was that property could be sold, for instance, to an adjoining property owner. I don't recall that there was a specific mandate that another house has to be built on it, and I don't think that requirement specified whether it was something from land bank or not. So, and as I think of Blackman Township, we openly discussed that night. One specific house that has been partially burned, it's been sitting vacant for at least four or five years, that nobody is ever going to buy, and I think fits the exact criteria of what we should be doing with this money. And I also spoke to Commissioner Rice tonight. Who can't drive around their district and find a house that's got windows boarded up with a roof caving in? And the reality is that these aren't properties that are just given to CAA. They're able to buy properties and then demolish them. So I have to believe, even though there may not be any in the land bank, Carl, I have to believe that there are properties out there that will qualify. And if they make an honest effort, and there are none in the townships, literally, then they use it where they can use it. I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Commissioner Duckham?
I don't suppose one of our options is to give the money back to Chinese, is it?
Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't disagree with what Commissioner Elwell just said. He is correct. A house can be torn down, and the adjacent owner can purchase, purchase the vacant property if they, if they, if they fall underneath certain criteria. So I certainly do agree with that. But once again, the information I'm getting from two different sources who are very familiar with these properties, again, there is a concern that, that they, that a house does fall into the consensus tract first and foremost, and there is a concern that if there's actually any out there. I hope there is, too. I hope there isn't in the townships, because the townships, that's why the townships brought this up. They want it in their communities. They don't want it in the city. So I truly hope that does happen. On the other hand, Commissioner Elwell, I agree. If it doesn't happen, then so be it. I suppose then the money's all going to go to the city.
Commissioner Elwell?
This will be my final comment. If you do the math on it, I think it factors out to about six houses, five or six houses that they could knock down. And I had this conversation with Carl earlier, that I want to make my expectations clear to CAA as much as we can, that we want them to make an earnest effort to find houses in these outlying tracts, if they can. And it's just really as simple as that. Thank you. And I'll shut up.
Motion passed? I've got nine. Nine to two.
Mr. Chairman, we have, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Williams?
I apologize. Mr. Chairman, we have no further business coming before the board this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel and Finance, chaired by Commissioner Jim Vidito.
Mr. Chair, we have no items to bring forth to the board this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any unfinished business to come before the board? Seeing none, we've now arrived at new business. You received in your packet the Administrator Controller's salary and the attached documentation. Entertain a motion if I could, and then we'll have some discussion if we'd like to. Or have a motion and support? Any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had spoken to you briefly about this issue, and I personally believe there's wisdom in our board sending this back to Personnel and Finance. Almost every issue that comes before the board here goes through the committee process. It allows more open discussion, and I'm not faulting anybody for this ending up here on the agenda. But the reality is that there's no point hurrying this. We can send it through Personnel and Finance next month, and then bring it back to the full board in November, and I, I think that would be the wisest thing to do. I think we need to have more discussion on it. And at some point, I think I'll make a tabling motion, if you'd rather, if I wait for discussion.
I'd like you to wait a moment if you would, please. Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Vidito?
I think, you know, in this particular case, in reading, in reading the contractual verbiage, and there, to me, there's not a lot of discussion that can occur back in Personnel and Finance. So with that, I concurred with Chairman Shotwell to bring it forward this evening, and the discussion is always good as a county commissioner, but I think what we're doing here is honoring a contract that's in place.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, having spoken with the administrator, and spoken with the fellow Commissioners, I don't think there's a problem in waiting one extra month to take a look at this, have it sent back down to Personnel and Finance. There's one question that I have that I'm waiting on an answer on, but I don't think it's necessary to vote on it, particularly if the Administrator doesn't have a problem with it waiting an extra month. Thank you.
Any other first round Commissioner comments? Okay, let me explain why it's here. This is one of the few things that the Chairman has a responsibility to handle, the Administrator Controller's review. The whole board is who hired the Administrator Controller, and that's the reason why I brought it here this evening, after consultation with the Chairman of Personnel and Finance, and the Chairman, the Vice Chair of the County Board of Commissioners. I feel that all 12 of us are the ones that hired him, and if there's going to be any discussion, we can handle it here this evening. And I would politely ask that we clean it up here if we could. If you do want to have a motion to postpone and return it to committee, I'd be more than happy to entertain that and go ahead and vote on it. But I think it's, this is one of the things, it's a responsibility of the full board, and it doesn't, it's not something that goes through committee. Just as his review didn't go through committee, it came to the full board, and that's my reason for bringing it here at this time. So if someone would like to speak, I'd be happy to go ahead and start the second round. Commissioner Elwell?
Mr. Chairman, if we can, if you can look at page 117 of the PDF, and it, it's under category 2, the current situation, number C, and it goes on to talk about how consideration shall be given on an annual basis to increase compensation to employee dependent on the results of the performance evaluation inducted under the provisions of Section 4. We've had that, and without going over that evaluation again, how is what we're doing relevant to the outcome of that performance evaluation?
Are you asking me to answer that question?
Well, that's one of the things that I'm throwing out there, and I think it merits talking about that, maybe one-on-one with the Administrator, and then amongst ourselves at Personnel and Finance, and then coming back here. I'm not, I'm trying not to be disrespectful, and I don't mean to be. So don't get me wrong, but that language is in there in the packet.
Correct, and we had that in closed session, that discussion with him. I guess the reason why we're here tonight is because I didn't come back out of closed session with this in hand, and attempt to do it, because we had spoken to the audience and said we weren't going to return after closed session and take any actionable items. So I'm here this evening with it. Again, I refer back to the 12 of us are the ones that hired the Administrator, and I would hope we could handle that here. That's my opinion. I guess I'd ask the board to make a motion to return it to Personnel and Finance, and let's see where it goes. Commissioner Leczka had his hand up.
I guess I don't, I don't see where there's, I mean, we did what we're supposed to do, and I don't see where there's a need to send it back either, so I, that's my two cents.
Commissioner Hurl?
Yeah, I gotta go along with what Commissioner Leczka just said. I can go along with this. I have no problem with it at all, and looking over the report and everything like this, this is some of the decisions you gotta make. So I think that we should make, go ahead with it tonight.
Commissioner Williams?
Mr. Chairman, lo and behold, explanation, I agree that we can go ahead with it tonight. I don't think there's, if members of the Personnel and Finance Committee aren't interested in hearing it again, and are ready to vote on it tonight, then it makes sense to do
Commissioner Duckham?
I don't have a problem with going ahead and doing this tonight, but I just wonder, in the past, what protocol we did use on the same situation with the administrators. With Mr. Tereskevich, we did the same, a similar type of program, but we had a much longer evaluation sheet. After Mr. Tereskevich, the next administrator wasn't here long enough for review. And with Mr. Treacher, he didn't want a review, and said he would walk out if we attempted one, because he was in the drop, and it had already had his salary pretty much set, and he was also...
he was all set to go. This is our first shot at this, Phil, if you would, under Administrator Overton and I'm just following back on past practice that I saw as when I was just a commissioner.
So I guess then really, in all reality, we probably should have handled it in retrospect after the evaluation or just simply announced it upfront. That's the only issue is it wasn't announced upfront. We, between, you know, we could announce the study session or whatever, so I guess it's just a glitch and I'll support going ahead with it tonight.
Any other commissioner comments? Let's use our lights to vote. I thank you commissioners for your understanding on this and we'll make an effort in the future to make sure we, we get it at least at a study session for you all. Now arrived at the second round of public comment. If you'd like to address the board of commissioner, please do. Any other public comment? Seeing none, commissioner comment? Commissioner Alexander? A motion to receive the documents, please.
And Julie, we're having a hard time hearing you down here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried.
I can always use my teacher voice. I'm sure you can hear me then. Focusing on the county's strategic priority of education. The county's education team has initiated another contest encouraging Jackson County students, grades K through eight, to enter the second contest called "Don't Be Afraid Of Math." During the month of November, children can visit the mathmakesadifference.com website for the chance to win an iPod or a scholarship to JAMA's Engineering in Elementary, I Can Make It Camp. Machining you. A randomly selected teacher with 100% participation may also win an iPad plus 100% of her math students the opportunity to win an iPod. That is a very exciting program and I've been enjoying working with Adam on that contest. Again, if you go to the county's website, to the Math Makes a Difference website, that contest will be up and running through November, so we need to encourage our youth, grades K through eight, to participate in that. In addition, as a part of the C2C Cradle to Career Educational Program, you'll be hearing more on another educational initiative within our county, energizing education. This pilot program, taking place at Jackson Public Schools Frost Elementary, will offer support in school literacy mentoring, after-school support, and family involvement. Funding comes from a matching grant initiated by Consumers Energy. I'm very excited about the opportunities we're providing for our Jackson County students and families. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Hurl?
This last week here, we had a email sent out with, from the land bank, the attendance and I kind of questioned what was that about? Because generally when we get the attendance, we get it for all committees. I know they're not 100%, but out of that, is there some action that needs to be taken on that committee or what? I know we had someone running on that tonight, but is that why we sent that out? I don't understand it.
That, that's correct. It was brought up in committee and requested that an attendance be seen and it was provided specifically for the appointments this evening, Cliff. That's what it was for.
Is this the way it will be handled in the future when we make an appointment from that board?
Only if it's requested by a commissioner. Any other, any other commissioner comments? We are adjourned.